Okay, we're in the College Board Selective Meeting to order for January 19th. Roll call with Donald Poole, myself, Pam Alley, Jake Thompson, Bill Crossman is attending remotely, Andy Doherty Town Manager, and Elizabeth Bunkster, Deputy Town Attorney. Uh, approve agenda. All set?
Uh, just the one, uh, you take off the executive session, you don't have.
Okay. I move we approve the agenda as amended.
Second.
Seconded by Donald Poole, all those in favor. Uh, minutes, approve the minutes from the January 5th meeting.
So moved.
Well, second it in the discussion. All those in favor. Approve and sign treasures warrant number 29, so moved.
Second.
Seconded by Donald Poole, all those in favor. Okay, communications, town of Alzaro.
Uh, just sharing with you, um, they had sent, um, the board, uh, letters, a couple of letters just acknowledging, letting you know, um, about the, I don't know if you remember hearing about the trash.
I saw.
That had a couple of bales of trash fall off it in, in the bay back in December. Um, so they've been discussing, you know, following up with that with the state. And they just wanted to share and keep your, you guys apprised of what they've been sharing with them, that they're concerned for generally that activity and what happened and what that means for the lobster industry and the health of the bay, so.
Has the state done anything to that company? They haven't reported, they haven't cleaned it up. Is there any punishment gonna be coming down from that?
I'm not familiar enough with the, I assume so, I, but I don't know.
I saw on the news where they were like showing them cleaning it up up on Sears Island, but I didn't realize that. They said on that, that only one bale fell overboard, but in the, for instance, had two, two bales, which is two, which is, yeah, two tons. And I don't understand why we need to be, hurt needs to be bringing in plastic to burn up there. It seems like that's funny, a rather ideal thing to get burned very, right? Without shipping it in from Northern Ireland, so that just means.
I'm gonna call me, Jake.
Yeah, somewhere like, something like that.
Yeah, speakers from the floor. Okay, committee and department reports and appointments, excepting appropriate donations, do we?
I didn't, it was on there, I wasn't given the list for it, though.
Yeah, okay. Okay, planning and community development then, that would mean game is up. Committee policy updates.
Hi, thank you. Um, so, I have a few different, um, updates. I wanted to give you guys an update on our funding of our downtown project, which I'm happy to be able to do. Um, so, whoops, sorry about that. So, this is just sort of picking up where we left off last time. Um, I think I had already, um, said that we were ineligible for a FEMA grant that we were hoping to get, um, which our last conversation was based on the fact that we were, I don't say short, but, um, to make our math work, um, we would need an additional 103,000 from the town, um, as town match, and, um, I think it was said at the meeting that, um, we would, um, hopefully ensure that that would go into reserves for this coming fiscal year. I believe that was the conversation. So what I've gone ahead and done so we can make the math work for the grant, um, and again, this is for EDA, Economic Development Agency Federal Grant. Um, this is for an infrastructure grant, it's a 50-50 match, so the more match we have, the more, the, the better it looks, um, to, for our chances of, of getting the grant. So, um, we do have more than a 50% match. So, over here is our, is our math. So, um, I've added what, to what we already had in reserves, um, that you guys had voted to allocate for this project, which was the $1 million. Um, I added the 103, um, so we're doing, um, 1,103,000 as our match. And this 625 is from our, um, main DOT MPI grant. Um, the 500,000 is still pending, but that is, uh, hopefully a contribution that the Water District will be able to make depending on, um, if they receive the loan, um, and hopefully forgiveness, uh, portion, um, for their part, but we have that in here to make, make this work. So our total match is $2,228,000. Our ask, uh, for EDA is 1.9 million. And the good news that I get to report is that who we work with, who the representative for Northeast, um, for EDA is Alan Brigham, has agreed that, um, he is happy to work with this number. So, that means we are underway to actually getting this grant submitted, which I'm very thankful for, this has been a long process. Um, so our goal is by February, um, to be able to submit this grant. We're doing all of the various, uh, federal paperwork that's involved, um, but, um, that's our goal. So I've been meeting on a weekly, sometimes bi-weekly basis with the folks at Midcoast Economic Development District, MACED, and they will be actually, you know, applying on our, for us, um, and administering the grant. So, we're just working in conjunction with them to get all of the paperwork in. So, I do have one, um, uh, letter of support or sort of letter, yeah, I wanna say letter, letter of commitment, that's what I mean, letter of commitment that Eric, I have prepared for you to sign. So I'll get that to you and Andy, um, so, so that will be part of our grant. But I just wanted to, um, let you guys know, this is good news and we're, you know, we're still a long way from, um, anything being known, but this is better than we were, um, even two weeks ago. So, any questions on that before we move on?
Uh, yeah, I just wanna know what happens if the Water District doesn't receive that.
Yeah, so, that's a good question, Pam. Um, you know, I think of, you know, various things could happen. So, one, one of the things we still have available to us, which we're going to do regardless, um, is apply to NBRC, which is Northern Borders Regional Commission, that's, um, I believe a February or March grant. Uh, it actually might be a little bit later, it might be an April grant, but we, you know, we could, we would hopefully know. I don't, do you, do you have a date? Do you know, Pam, the date of notification for that, the final notification?
No, I don't, but we're meeting next Tuesday, so I'm sure we'll have an update from Rick.
Yeah, okay.
Or if not, if we don't, I'll, I'll make sure I ask.
Okay, so, I mean, I think there's a, there's a bunch of different paths that, that would need to be considered. One, obviously, the worst one for us is that the project gets further modified if the funds aren't there. I know that in the past, there has been some flexibility within EDA to help, um, help certain projects that can't quite, you know, that, that look like they're gonna have, um, the match or sort of feel like they're gonna have the match when they apply, but sometimes things don't, don't work out quite right. There's some situations where there can be, uh, some flexibility within EDA, that's not, that's afar from a guarantee. Um, the other bit is that we apply for NBRC and are able to get, uh, the, the funding that we need. So, we don't, you know, it's sort of like we have to keep rolling and hope for the best, but we'll be flexible and, and try to add, adapt as we need to and, and just do the best we can.
I'm sure we'll definitely, um, get back to you, or somebody will let you know after they find out, obviously, but maybe we'll get some more information Tuesday.
Yeah, that's great. We're very, very hopeful, I'm sure we're all very hopeful that it's gonna work out. Any other questions?
When will you know if it gets accepted, if we put it in February? Is it this summer, next fall, next year?
Um, I, I'm pretty sure it's, it's within, um, I think, let's see, I'm trying to remember what Bill told us. No, it, it, it won't be that long. It, it's really just a matter of like, I think, two or three months.
Yeah, I think we were kind of assuming by the end of May, we should have a pretty good indication.
Okay, um, so, the next thing I just wanted to update or, or talk with you about was, um, the committee work, and that's primarily based on the memo that I sent. And just to, just to clarify for folks listening in or, or watching, um, on Facebook, that, um, the Planning Department did send the board a memo in their board packet, um, requesting that we adopt a committee guidelines policy, and this is based on the work that, um, Matt Jablonsky and I have been doing to really help, um, sort of streamline the committee process, defining, help committees really defining their purpose and structure and their work plans and deliverables, so that we can ensure that the work that committees are doing really aligns with the town-focused areas and goals, and also to provide committees with the structure and support that they need to be able to succeed in their work. So, um, in my memo, I essentially had sent a draft policy, um, and was hoping, um, at this time, or if you all prefer at a later date, to get, uh, your feedback and suggestions. Um, my goal would be to take that information, revise the policy to a next draft that you could, um, appro, I don't say approve, but allow me to then, um, send to the committees, uh, if, if not all committees, at least their chairs, to get their feedback. And then we would revise and eventually, uh, hopefully before too long, get to a place where we could adopt a final version of the policy. So, back to feedback and suggestions, I don't know if you're ready or willing to offer those now, or if you wanna wait, but I'm, I'm all ears and will take notes if you are.
I, I've read it briefly and I don't care.
It's approved by the board, we don't need to have it public, and, um, it's not like that. No, you just, yeah, you just create the guidance for the committees that you created.
This is our own, this will be our own policy. Policies don't require help caring, but by our, uh, ordinances.
I wasn't sure if this counted as like an ordinance now, so I was, it was a period, it's curious.
No, I mean, it's.
I mean, everything looked good to me when I read it.
Yeah, I didn't see anything that concerned me.
Basically just things that people should know anyway, isn't it? I mean.
Oh, Phil, you have a question?
I just wanted to say that I think it looks good too, uh, but it's a, it's a drastic change from the way committees have done their work in the past. And we're gonna have to be mindful to, uh, hold our feet and their feet to the fire if they're gonna conform with these new and perfectly sensible guidelines.
Yeah, Phil, I think to your point, um, I, I'm, I'm grateful that, you know, we have, um, the capacity in, uh, Matt, and also, you know, I'm able to, I think this is a transition and to be able to work, um, with committees, at least at the outset, to help people, um, understand, you know, how, how they would, for example, this idea of a committee formation document, you know, how they would fill that out. And, um, we, we, you know, we certainly intend to provide people with, um, the assistance and support they would need to, to do it successfully and sort of get used to the fact that, um, things might be, be done a little bit differently.
I move we accept, um, the committee guidelines, policy statement.
Okay.
Seconded by Pam Alley, is there any further discussion?
Can I, um, propose then, um, that I take what, what is here, um, develop that, um, committee formation document, and then bring it to at least the committee chairs, if not just present it to the committees, to, to give them a chance to offer, um, any feedback or suggestions? Is that a possibility before we, um, adopt it fully?
Does anybody have any objections to that?
No.
No, okay, I'll withdraw, I'll withdraw my motion then.
So we can go on.
And will, hopefully, you know, hopefully on our next meeting, approve it then. Thank you.
Okay.
Hey, one thing on this, we might wanna have something in here about how do, um, dissolve a committee if they've achieved their stated objective. And we don't wanna hear a lot, how long members serve and all that, but, you know, for example, broadband task force, we actually get broadband on here. We shouldn't need that task force anymore, committee anymore, so maybe just something quickly in there about how to wrap up these committees when they're no longer needed.
Super, okay, yeah, I'll make that more explicit. I think I was, um, making an assumption it was implied in the timeline, but I think your point is correct, that it, it needs to be more explicit. So I will, I will add something that, that does that. Thank you. Okay, um, so, just wanna give you a, a few quick updates, and, um, these are all based on committees. So, broadband, um, we are, um, having our, um, we've had three presentations, but this is the second community conversation. It's happening tomorrow night at 6:00 PM. Um, you do need to register for it if you wanna attend. That information is on the website, also on Facebook. Um, if anyone's listening and wants to attend, go to the town website. You'll see, um, something, an image for broadband right on the homepage. You'll also see under News and Announcements. It says, "Join the Broadband Conversation." Click on that, you'll see the link to register for the event. Um, so, tomorrow night's conversation is going to be with Mark Green of Long Island, and, um, Mark's gonna tell us all about Long Island's partnership with Consolidated Communications. I feel like this is gonna be a very relevant conversation, um, since, um, Consolidated is, you know, obviously one of our incumbents. They have given us a very high-level estimate for a fiber-to-the-premise broadband build-out on Vinyl Haven. So, their partnership with Long Island, um, as, you know, I'm, I'm not making the assumption that, that we're gonna partner with, with CCI, but if we were, um, the model that would be used is the model that they are using with Long Island. So, I would just encourage if, if you can make that, um, if you can make the presentation tomorrow night, of course, it will be recorded. It will be posted on the, on the town's YouTube channel, so you can watch it after, but I think it's going to be informative and there'll be a chance, obviously, a Q and A to talk, to ask Mark questions and get some more details about, you know, what that process was like with, um, or has been like with CCI, and, um, you know, he'll, he doesn't, um, he'll, he'll be very forthcoming, so, um, I think it'll be very relevant and just a good opportunity to, to, uh, get some more information about that consolidated option. Any questions about that?
Is Long Island anywhere near the size of Long Island, or?
Is what, no?
Long Island, I was wondering how many residents in it, but.
Nowhere near.
Yeah, it's small. It's a, it's a much smaller project. Um, all, all, I think all the projects we've looked at so far have been, have been much smaller than what we're, what we're tackling. I mean, they have 200 year-round residents.
What, what was the consolidated ballpark for a broadband network out here?
I think that, I think it was 3.3 million.
Yeah.
I mean, considering that, you know, I think ours, our, our estimate with, with our, in our report came in, uh, like over, like three, it was 3.9. I mean, that's for an entire build-out. Obviously, we're not, we're not, um, adding poles, where we might be replacing poles with that. But, um, Consolidated owns the majority, I, I, I wanna say the majority, but they own a lot of the poles out here already. But they, other than that, they would need to be replacing all of their infrastructure and, um, you know, figuring out how to run, uh, fiber from North Haven to Vinyl Haven, because Fox Island doesn't have, um, an undersea cable with fiber in it yet. Um, Spectrum does, um, so that's sort of a missing link. So, they're essentially doing, and they would be doing an entirely, um, new fiber-to-the-home build-out, just like, you know, if the town were to take it on, we'd be doing the same thing, except we don't have access to the poles, so.
Did Spectrum make a bid on it?
Um, they haven't, they, well, and, and just keep in mind, none of this is official, right? Cause we haven't actually solicited any RFPs from anybody. We're just asking, you know, hey, what if? And they, you know, write something on the back of a napkin. Um, we, we don't know, um, what that number is from Spectrum yet. Um, it, it's, it's, it's gonna come, um, apparently it will come, we, we, we've been waiting. But, um, what we do know is, of course, it will be less, because they already own and have access to a backbone, um, an undersea cable, so just, you know, logically, it will be less. Any other questions? Okay, and we do have another conversation that's, uh, next Wednesday, same time. This conver, that conversation, um, may or may not be as relevant, um, depending on how you look at it, but it's with Islesborough. And as we know, Islesborough, they built out their own system, um, it's owned by the town, they contract with GWI to be their ISP. Their primary goal was equity, so they wanted to make, um, access affordable for all residents. So how they've set it up, um, is to, to achieve that goal. So, we'll be hearing, um, about that, um, project and, and how things are working out for them, um, next Wednesday, same time. So, um, just real quick, Sea Level Rise, um, I, I think what I just wanted to put on your radar is that, um, I mentioned the last time we did a Sea Level Rise update, that we, as a Sea Level Rise Committee, or the Sea Level Rise Committee, um, has, had started their own tide monitoring project, and that's these gauges that you'll see around town. That pilot, I don't say it's ended, but we went through our pilot period, and now we're in a phase of really assessing what we need to change, what, what didn't work. But in order to bring that, uh, project to fruition, and in order to, um, take on a couple of other projects, um, which, one is this Property Owners Guide, and that is in conjunction with a grant that we are doing, um, with Main Sea Grant, that's a partnership that they, um, they are doing a project called Collaborating Toward Climate Solutions, and we are part of that grant. But one of the things we are hoping to take on is developing a guide, um, for property owners, specific to Vinyl Haven, to help them, um, sort of navigate and understand the resources, um, available, or, well, first, understand, um, certain implications of climate change and sea level rise that could affect them. I mean, most people know, cause they're, they're seeing it happening, um, with flooding, um, and increased, uh, rainfall, um, and probably increased winds. Um, but we're, we wanna create a Property Owners Guide that, um, we can essentially put in people's hands that will give them access to information and resources about, well, where do I, how can I get help for this? Or what do I, you know, what do I do about this? Um, so that, and also, we had talked about this time, well, a little bit later than this time last year, um, and Phil had made a, made a, um, a change, uh, that we had requested or that the committee had requested to add climate change, um, or climate action to the mission of the Sea Level Rise Committee. And one of the things we've been slowly working on is to develop a youth component, uh, to that. And we're not exactly sure how this is evolving, but I'm getting to my point here, is that all of these things, um, are gonna require, um, more, more of my time. So, what I'm, what I've done is, uh, reached out to the Island Institute. I'll write a proposal, and they're willing to, um, fund this work. And so I just wanted to make sure that, that you are all, all were okay with that, and, um, you know, that I would just move forward to get, get, uh, my time covered through that grant.
Yeah, sounds like there's support here, yeah.
Okay, very good.
Woo, go far.
So, the last thing, um, and this is something that Andy helped me with, um, this past week, was something that he and I have tossed around for an idea, um, is that while we, you know, we have a downtown master plan, um, you know, we have other plans on our shelf that really help us, um, when we go to do projects, the Sewer Climate Adaptation Plan. Um, we don't have a sustainable waste management plan, so we've talked about, Andy and I have talked about really trying to access, uh, grad students, and through some of the grants that we're working on, in particular with, um, Main Sea Grant, um, we have access, we have access or connections to more grad students. So, this week, we put in a proposal to, um, a team, uh, that works with grad students to connect them with projects. So, what we proposed, um, was essentially, um, asking for a grad student or grad students to work with us to develop a sustainable waste management plan with the ultimate goal of really increasing the sustainability of all of the waste management practices that are under the town's purview. And so that would include like in, enhancing materials reclamation, and then ultimately trying to reduce overall disposal costs. So it might include policy recommendations, practice recommendations. Um, and one of the biggest things that is, has been missing, um, and Waste Watchers really aren't too keen on, um, embarking on this, but to do a waste audit, uh, for the residential municipal solid waste, so we have a baseline. Um, cause that's always been one of the challenges, we have no baseline for our diversion goals. That includes compost. Like, we don't really know where we're starting, so it's hard to gauge progress. Um, so, that would be part of it. Um, and, and the goal with, with this is that as we move toward, um, hopefully, the capital improvements that are, are gonna be required at the transfer station, is that we have a plan of proposed, um, practices, um, that might help, um, guide how that, uh, uh, any like specifics for that build-out or specific requirements for that build-out. So I just wanted to, to keep you guys in the know, share that with you, and if you have any thoughts or suggestions, we don't know if anyone's gonna pick it up, but we definitely would like to see it happening, cause I think it will, um, I think it will really help us, instead of doing things sort of in a siloed way, which, which so far, you know, we've managed to do, I think it will help sort of put everything in one plan and, and perhaps make it a little bit, um, easier to be comprehensive about, um, really tackling some of the, the sustainability issues. Any thoughts, feedbacks, comments?
I don't have too much to do.
Gotta keep it dynamic.
Thanks, Dave.
All right, thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Okay, local commissioners' report.
I think this past week's printed off, it's on the screen here, um, we did, they did, a couple of them did help with the first truckload of base blocks for the Salsancho today that needed out here.
Is that why the parking lot was pulled off down there?
Uh, that's actually, um, intended, intended for material for the bridge project. They were gonna bring a barge, a little bit of material out and, and put it there and then truck it up. Um, I think last I knew that was due this week, it was gonna come last week, but they had a barge issue and they get the crane working, they got it working yesterday, they were gonna bring it out, I think, tomorrow or Thursday, so. There were a few trees that came down the other day, probably no, and so they were out, um, you know, keeping an eye on that and clearing, clearing sections of the road that needed to be done.
Any questions?
I don't, I can't get a split screen here trying to read through the potty glass.
So, wanted to share, any guys, can a short start?
Uh, the garage, uh, the company working on the garage is supposed to be out, um, next week. I'm anticipating being out here with some of the roofing and insulation material.
Awesome.
Go on to Herbert Master, report something.
Yeah, I thought this was the question.
Yeah.
Good job.
What are the chances of number 12 actually being implemented?
Zero to none.
I mean, basically, how, how can you say, I mean, when he, when he puts that, he's a fisherman with his own warts, I mean, someone could say, oh.
I mean, someone could say, oh, I'm gonna tie up over there. I mean, it's basically what we've been trying to do anyway, charge people to use the flows. I see number 11 being a bigger issue. Trying to find someone, I mean, who, how do you, does the Army Corps of Engineers have people that are certified to inspect morgues? I mean, what are we gonna say, every morgue has to be this, or is it by boat size? I mean, because a morgue doesn't need a, big morgue is a 35 foot boat, and a 35 foot boat doesn't need as big, I mean, it's all.
Yeah, there's guidelines that generally based on boat, we, as I understand it, that other ordinance, other towns' ordinances would have in place. I mean, it is based on the boat size, the type of blocking that would be required, so.
Yeah, I would think they have some sort of, maybe different groupings.
Right, yeah, we don't have to create it, right, we might review one that's out there and.
Yeah, I think that's important that they, that we look at other harbors and see what they have for ordinances and what they how and what their guidelines are, and that will help us determine what might work out here.
So some of, some like, something like that, I think, is probably likely to be seen as a result of the harbor management plan that's being worked on. And I don't have an update on that, but I think that's exactly something that'll be included in that meeting that we had then.
And so I can stupid phone myself, I wanna think I got a new one. But, yeah, they, I mean, every two years, is that like a visual inspection? And like every 10 years or something, it needs to be hauled out of the water to check the staple and everything? Because every two years, like if it's a brand new morgue, and that seems like, I don't know, you could visually inspect most of it from, I mean, but to pull it out of the, you need, I mean, there's only one person over here, I think, I could think of that can even put morgues, and he's not gonna be able to do all of them in two years, I don't think.
No.
Well, they'd have to do it on a rotating basis, you know?
But I mean, I can haul my morgue up to the chain and visually inspect everything but the staple myself every year, which I pretty much do every year. I mean, the only part I don't see is the staple, which a diver could go down and check pretty easily. But you're not gonna see underneath the rock because it's in the mud. I mean, I don't think that needs to be done every two years myself, but, I mean, although I just bought a brand new morgue last year, so when I get my new boat, so I would think that would last.
Well, I think those. However, however often after the inspection, wouldn't come from the town, it should come from the Army Corps of Engineers, whoever comes up with those.
I mean, I could see a visual inspection every two years.
I agree, it shouldn't, it shouldn't have to haul it every morning every two years. Like you said, especially if it's a new one that's on, just put in, you know, a year or two.
Well, looking at the summary, should we go line, I don't, you know, start one, no discussion, work our way down to number 13?
Well, yeah.
Or do you wanna just?
That's a good idea, Pam, especially because, yeah, the downtown wharf is in the parking lot.
Is that what he means?
Oh, yeah, it's gotta be, it's gotta be parking lot.
Yeah, there's no ladders, yeah.
Well, probably a couple, couple, he's recommending two ladders, so. Fun by many, then piling cats, of course, she that's just.
Cones.
Yeah, that's just, yeah.
Well, there were some when they did, redid the new, the downtown wharf, they must have fallen off or something?
A lot of them were broke because of just rigid plastic and not very thick.
I'm gonna need to line up someone to do hinges connecting, you know, the floats.
Like, Chris does all the floats, and my father has a fan on his stuff, and they seem to be pretty regular.
Okay, so, let's slow up here then. So number three, is that something you think we need to ask somebody to do, like Chris, or?
That's, yeah, that's just regular maintenance, and I think Jim's got that in his thing to do.
I mean, I don't think that's a big expense, he says they're serviceable for now, it's just.
Right, no, I'm just saying, is that something we need to have planned and have Chris do? Or?
I think it's, we consider that routine maintenance, and I think Jim's got it in his rolodex, if you will, of to to do this spring.
Okay.
Or to coordinate to have done this spring.
Okay, so one, two, and three, we're all set. Sorry.
Well, the ladders are gonna be relative, I mean, could be kind of a price thing, I don't know that we have, but, well, we have the harbor reserve generally that we could pull that one if you want to approve. You know, ladders are, you know, three of them, we can get some numbers on them, but I'm assuming it's gonna be a couple grand anyways to get three of them put in.
Oh, including putting in, yeah.
So what, what one did you say that you assumed that was the parking lot?
The downtown wharf.
Yeah, and that you think three. You think three ladders are necessary there?
Because it has the ramp that goes down.
Well, I mean, I'm curious to know where he wants the ladders. Are they, I mean, because part of the wharf, you can't get to until the tide's up pretty good anywhere, like up where the whatever, the haven use, whatever that restaurant's called now. But like on the other side, I can see putting maybe two on that, that side maybe, but you would think you'd only need one, maybe two ladders total, one on each side, because the wharf takes up quite a bit of it.
Right.
You get, obviously, there's some boats that line up behind that float system that we have to unload traps. I don't know how necessarily it would be to have one there, and then you got the other side by the boat launch. People tie up there in bottom out and clean off the boat.
Yeah, I would just think like one on that side and one back.
I think two would be plenty.
Yeah, probably.
We could start with two, I mean, it'd be cheaper.
We'll get some numbers on on the ladders.
I was trying to add in two floats at the ferry dock.
Where is he? I assume he envisions one going sideways across the end, is that what he means?
Yeah.
One float on the end?
Teed it off, yeah.
Like, so he'd add another float?
And then tee.
And then tee one off at the end? Or make it an L, I guess, maybe, yeah.
But how much are two floats, like?
Last time I saw you, you said they were like $15,000 a piece.
I think 10, 15, depending on what you used to build them.
What do you mean?
I think the metal ones were, I think, pushing 15, and the wooden one, I think, were closer to 10.
I'm also gonna be just curious if, you know, there technically is a channel there, you know, going into the harbor. I wonder if two, if two floats is going to.
Well, I'm assuming that, now that they added those extra two pins, he's, he's adding one to go up to the end, and the other one would kind of like.
Which won't take up much room, yeah.
No, but two floats is, it would be something we'll have to add to our budget this spring, we'll have to put that on our, if we want to do it.
I think he needs to, um, give us a size. He always says same size, what does that mean?
Same size.
I'm sure they're probably watching.
I'm assuming that's.
Are they 10 by 20, or?
They're about, yeah. I don't think he was intending that, so you have one teed off at the end, it's just that the end float will be reserved for.
Okay, so he thinks he can get two more floats out there now, straight?
Yeah.
We can, we can start with one and see how that does.
Is the, um, the old ferry dock, is that getting removed?
Not, it's not in any work plan right now, other than to say that it's, it's recommended to start planning for it. But there's no work plan to remove it this time.
Be too bad, they could just, when they have that fire that way with the crane, they couldn't just rip all that shit out of there? Use the rocks, put them in the bridge, yeah, or not?
Temporary bridge.
Oh, yeah, then we could use that rock to close off the, can't play, no, can't play, see, uh, covert up and, whatever.
There you go.
I'm just saying, that's too bad, um.
So, um.
Oh, yeah, I mean, we're gonna, we're gonna think about that when it comes to budget season, it's a little too long, I guess, right?
We could always do one, one year and then one the next year.
So he has to, he, this isn't, obviously, it's budget.
No.
But he might want to put at least one float into that budget.
For the, for the next fiscal year, yeah, I agree.
But 21, or whatever year it's gonna be, 22.
Yeah, but I have to give us some numbers, and budget season is fast approaching.
Oh, time of year.
Good to see that.
Okay, um, yeah, and haul, and hauling out and cleaning this, yeah, right, that's just, I don't know, I don't know, when, I don't even know if that's ever been done.
Well, but I mean, there's, I don't think there's a wire that you couldn't get them hollow and to travel it to do it. And that you could do the two there in a day and just pressure wash them, make sure there's nothing broken and set them back over. I mean, I don't know how much, they're charged by the foot, so I don't know how long they, I mean, that's what they do with boats, so I don't know. Doesn't seem like it would be a big cost unless there's a lot of maintenance.
Right, which, there is a maintenance.
That would be the time to replace the the connections between them, because it'll be a lot easier to do it when they're not rocking back and forth.
Right. Well, there we go.
Okay.
So that'll have to be in this budget.
Yeah.
We know the boat launch facilities need work, but we, we know.
Yeah.
And we know it's gonna be more, more like need to be replaced and need work.
Well, that was the, one of the big reasons for creating that harbor, at least in my mind, the harbor reserve a few years ago, was to try and build up what would be a 50 50 match if we get ship grant funding
Right.
to be able to do both of those, and, well, the the re filing at the fish plant, and hopefully also build both, both of boat launches. So if you put all those three projects together, as one did, you know, I think we're, we're getting closer to what I think would be a match, but until we put the projects up to bid, we also don't know what the cost will be, so. The last, the last parking lot that we've done, the town parking lot, would I think, about 225, to respile that and rebuild that one little section that that popped out. You know, the the fish plant's a little bit bigger.
Yeah, but it doesn't have an L to it. Right, I bet it would be both the same as files.
There's a few more, because they, you know, wraps. I guess where the co-op owns and how they might want to handle their section of it, and we talked about, but it kind of juts in a little bit and do just as many, if not a couple more.
But, um, those ones are town property, apparently, right?
Right, but, yeah, co-op owns its titles.
No, didn't call, give it back to the town?
No, never mind, it's a little slower.
Right.
Yeah, we agreed to, yeah.
Right, okay.
Number seven.
Yeah, um, yeah, um.
I don't know how that even.
Anyway, I mean, this is, this is skip, I don't really think it needs radar. But as far as, you know, the, the engine has been, the engine is, like, from my high school days.
How much, how much use does that get? Does it even get put over and used?
It's over all the time, and it's, it's available not just for the harbor master to use, it's available for, it's called Marine One, it's a fire EMS response bike if it's needed.
What's the horsepower?
90.
A 90? Right, that's a big chunk of change.
So wait, that also gets used by EMS fire?
Yeah, is that something that they can set up between?
No, not often, yeah. But could the three departments contribute to a new engine or a used one?
I mean, then, I mean, you could buy a, a GPS radar thing for a couple thousand dollars, that wouldn't be the end of the world. I mean, it wouldn't have to be a highest end thing, it's just gonna have to get them oriented.
Certainly, if it's fog and they have an emergency call.
Right, but I mean, if they have, they have one that's a, that can do a, it's like two, they, now they all can do.
Right.
So I would think that would be unreasonable to.
Right now, he has one of those standard horizons, like.
But I mean, you could get like a Ray Marine or a Garmin thing that does chart plotting and and radar, you know, for depends on how big the screen you want, but I mean.
Yeah, right, yeah.
Couple thousand, maybe, or a bit more.
We don't, we don't use a fish finder or something.
I mean, that, that could be something that they could put in the budget, right?
They go off the window?
What? A what? I mean, shouldn't that be part between, you should.
I don't listen to stopwatch.
Hey, probably, I mean, it's just, I think generally on the radar, I mean, it could, it could certainly be looked at that way.
So what about an end, well, about the engine, I mean, that's something, another thing he's just gonna have to add in somehow, put into the budget.
Well, that's another reason the reserves bill.
And I agree with what Donald said, maybe the other agencies or departments, whatever, that use the boat might pick in a little bit here and there.
Well, they're your reserves.
Well, you know, instead of taking the wrong out of one. What's that, what's he telling us?
We can bring Kerry and Mark in on the conversation with Jim and just kind of see and.
Yeah. That's a good idea.
Like, how much is it actually used, and like, do we really need a 90 horsepower on it, like, isn't like a thousand dollars?
It's a hundred, it used to be a hundred dollars a horse, and it's gone up, and apart. It used to be a hundred dollars a horse, right? Jay would know that many, but I have your world for engines.
Stupor, 15 horse Yamaha, it was $3,200 for a new one.
Yeah, but the bigger they go, it comes, I mean.
The price comes down a little bit, right, per horse?
I mean, now that they're four-stroke, I haven't bought a lot of four-stroke towboards, I try and buy used two-stroke.
How big is the boat?
24 feet, I think, or 20?
Yeah.
Oh, oh, so they need something, some power.
Yeah, so, whatever, care runs scarce, big care runs scarce.
I mean, because this, because the, I don't know how much it's actually used, so, in a brand new engine, and they're just gonna sit there, it's not really gonna be.
Right.
Oh, I mean, yeah, I mean, that, so, we're talking a few dozen hours probably.
Right, so you, maybe we're looking to get something that's used, that's somewhat newer, there's options there.
Is the, um, the motor still works okay, correct?
For the most part, I mean, it had an issue last year when it was out, it had some sort of steering or some sort of issue, I think it had to get towed in.
Oh, well, that's, yeah, that's gonna occur regardless of major motor.
That's right, cables and all that need to be replaced occasionally. Okay.
Okay, so what puts us on to?
Number three.
Yeah.
That's a great idea.
Yeah, I thought that's something that we actually set up in our.
Ordinance.
Yeah.
I don't know about the one moring curve.
Yeah, we know, we did not say that, but we did set up a place. Yeah, we don't want them where they just scattered around.
Right, that's part of the harbor plan that's being worked up now, too, and we're bringing that feedback that you had, yeah.
Okay, so we won't be doing it tonight, but yeah, you know, maybe sometime this summer, this is a.
Yeah.
Okay, that speedboat's abandoned, okay?
That's not really for us, is it?
No, that's not really our, that's just. We talked about.
Just a FYI.
Yeah, morgue inspections, um.
You skipped.
Number 10.
Oh, did I, oh, harbor wharf.
I thought they just got new ladders down there, like.
They replaced some of them, the ones that were really bad, but they weren't all of them, there's quite a few down there.
Yeah, so, but just the other ones.
I think about half of them had gotten done.
Well, certainly, we need to keep up with that, because we don't need anybody climbing up and having a wrong let go, so definitely, they need to be fixed.
So, I mean, if they're making ladders for the one wharf, they could just add it.
For the other.
Instead of making two ladders, they can make four or whatever it is.
The cost on those ones were relatively low, because the labor was volunteered to to build them. And then we we paid the materials and we paid to put them in.
So maybe we can do that again.
Possible.
Okay.
Number 11.
Number 11, okay, and we're back to morgue inspections. That's gonna become a pretty serious discussion, I think, for future.
Right.
Reference, um, yeah, because, you know, as far as authorized inspectors, like Jason, I don't know even who such a person is. And my father don't even authorize.
Well, that's what I mean, I mean, are we gonna have to set the parameters or are we gonna set somewhere, I mean?
If my, if my father says you need new morgues, probably not, or you need work anymore, he's not, you know, he's not even authorized to say that, it's still, it's just his own judgment, which.
You know, that's why.
People will be there.
Well, that's why I find that one a hard one, which, I mean, I, I do think they should be probably visually inspected every two or three years, I mean.
That's something we probably need a little more information on.
Yeah, check on other, what other towns do, and what, who's qualified. What we can, what we can even make people do.
Right.
And I agree with what you were saying, Jake, because most people that own boats are gonna have them swinging on a piece of clothesline, you know?
When I got a new boat, I got a, I got a new mo, a new, a new morgue, so, and I changed my pennant, you know? I keep an eye, really, when you've got a couple hundred thousand dollars invested, you're gonna keep an eye on it most of the time.
So.
Ninety, ninety percent of boat owners have to be heavily responsible, you know?
So I think that has to be taken into consideration also, but some people are a little more slack in that area.
Yeah. Okay.
Well.
Morgue fees.
I agree with that, but I don't see how it would ever come.
It wouldn't, it wouldn't pass, it's based on ordinance, and we're just changing things in the ordinance, people showed up and were very.
Yeah, but then if you exempt a fisherman with their own wharf, are you not exempting someone personally with their own?
Because they're not commercially.
Not commercial.
And, you know, that's, that's the way I would give it that.
Yeah, it would have to be commercial.
Well, I mean, we charge $50 for a commercial fisherman, $1,000 for a seasonal resident pleasure boat.
Yeah, it would be good to make it, yeah. Well, it would be, you have to go for boat anyway, and everybody all wore it down.
No, we set morgue fees.
The fees are set by the wharf.
Yeah, we could set fees tonight, we're not going to for anybody.
Yes, we're not doing that, but, settle down.
But, yeah, let's not, let's not make it on.
Okay.
Separate it.
And he would like the harbor master jurisdiction to extend, pack, right now it goes. And he would like the harbor master jurisdiction to extend. Right now it goes, it's Harbor Sands and Correct. And that, which goes as far as nor- some, as far as north point.
That's the mooring field.
Yeah.
Uh-huh.
The jurisdiction is, is the island. It's just what, what parts of the ordinance being enforced around the whole island. So the mooring, the mooring field is set for what you just described, and that's limited purview there. Uh, but if we have like an abandoned. Vessel or something washed up on the shore or float that needs to be taken care of on, somewhere on our island, like, you can, you can deal with that. You know, if we have jurisdiction, just certain parts of the ordinance are only specific to certain areas.
Does he have any recommendations specifically out of?
Why would he wanna have to deal? If he wants to do it, why would he wanna have to deal with a load down?
I know, I know, but I suppose. You know, for some things, it'd be just as easy for him to deal with rather than calling out the. National Guard, I suppose.
Okay, well, thank you. That's a, it's an ex- it's an excellent support.
That is great.
I was Jimmy feeling better, so.
You gained it.
Good.
Been out and about and working on getting stuff on both the animal control officer side and getting dogs registered again and. Uh, trying to keep things before that the wharves cleaned up, so.
Okay. Going to old business, airstrip.
So let me give you a, just a quick update. Um, I did walk, I don't know, uh, a couple times, uh, one with one of the butters and. Another time with Mark, just to find the property pins, um, and did walk those, like, we got one survey, um, multiple versions of it, different dates, one surveyor's. Um, renditions of it, where the pins are today correspond to that. I don't know if it was a stamped survey, but there was a site plan for the feasibility of the runway. Siting back in the early nineties, um, and this is what I was going by, um, I'm on the table, but it did suggest that there were at least two hundred feet. At the end of the airstrip, the fifteen hundred foot airstrip, which is what we still have today, so. Um, there's both slightly different. One I know where the stamp survey or the other one I assume was. You know, a scaled drawing of the property lines, they were talking about citing a twenty-five hundred foot at one point, um, uh, you know, they'd be in the town. Um, and so I was looking at that one, um, immediately, so. I gave some rough idea of what I was, what I thought based on the, um, the length, the depth of material that'd be needed and the width. Of the prop, of the runway that would be extended, um, so, and that's just my guess. Um, there's, there's some drainage things that would have to be addressed and. I don't know exactly how much fill and exactly what depth of what type of fill, but. Um, you know, somewhere between the fifteen and twenty thousand dollar range, my guess for material cost, you know, whether any of that's something we have or can be donated or whatnot, but. It's an idea of, of cost there. Um, if the property, we do need to go into, which it looks like we do, other properties, um, you know, and there isn't. Um, you know, folks aren't able or willing to just allow it, and we might, we're looking at some sort of. Legal fees for agreements or purchases or something like that, and if, if it needs to be purchased, there'd obviously be that cost, so. Um, that's still kind of a big question mark on that front, um, as to what those costs would be on that.
So how do you figure out which surveys are right?
Um. You'd either do another one.
Well, I guess you have two hundred feet on one and not on the other one, I mean.
That's a pretty big discrepancy. When I'm talking about three, three or four feet off the interview.
Well, I know originally when he first built that. I know this for a fact because my ex-husband's family owned that property and. The original owner came to my, uh, house. When he built that and he said, I'm very sorry, but I, I think I've gone on to your property.
Oh, he knew.
And that was in nineteen sixty-nine.
Yeah.
Did Spencer build that?
Can't remember. And he knew, he knew exactly what he was doing and did go over his boundary, but I don't recall how many feet.
Yeah, yeah, the, right now, the way the pins run is that very end of the runway with a taxi where it has the turnaround, um, you know, there's probably. Five foot by ten foot triangle, probably that would all generally within that property pin line.
Yeah.
But it doesn't go beyond that strip right now, that little narrow strip, and then it goes into, I believe, the.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I think, think the, they bought that property from the Alan's.
Probably others just use the check survey, it's more convenient to do now.
That's what I'll do, Eric.
Yeah, well, I don't know, I mean, right now, I mean, I'm not feeling confident with the legal fees budget to go and engage lawyers and surveyors or anything like that, um. And we do have a couple of things pending with, with the Superior Court and also with the State Tax Assessment Review Board. Um, you know, that, I don't know, at the end of the day, what that's gonna be. I'd be a little cautious about running into it too far this year. I mean, I think to get some better understanding of, you know, from a lawyer perhaps on what, what best we should do, what their recommendations might be. Um, I mean, I'm certainly can talk, continue to talk with the property owners. We did have, uh, a letter from one of them. Couple months ago, um, didn't seem relevant right then. The shares, we're still looking into some of this, um, but I could share that for the next meeting. You know, in the meantime, I could try and reach out to the other one that we would likely be going into as well. I think it would just be the two properties from, from that survey at least.
I mean, they're already restricted from what they can use them for, that property for anyway, so.
Right.
I mean. We think that we could come to some kind of an agreement.
Right. Yeah. So that's just what that looks like, but hopefully I can get the better idea and kind of earmark that for next year's budget numbers. At least be considered.
Okay. Seeing no new business, reporting to the manager.
Just a, a few things in there. You do have the attorneys looking at, um, the personnel policy. Um, my, my hope is that we will see. Uh, proposed changes from them or revisions from them, um, in early February, um, share that with you and some of the staff members to review, um. And then by the end of March, have that approved by you, uh, the personnel policy updated. If it happens sooner, great, uh, but that was what I was hopefully setting up for. Have been trying to work with folks on any plumbing or any, um, yeah, building and plumbing questions or permit issues. I did. Attend the last two meetings, uh, meetings in January, um, stayed absent, she does agree, I think. Last I knew, she was hoping to get back to some work this week, uh, so we'll work with her on that, um, meet whatever need she has. Working with Matt on moving forward with the strategic plan and implementing that to the departments, um. You know, trying to use this year's budgeting process to kind of line up what they're looking to do with, not just have goals that show a cost, if there's a cost associated, but then tie it to the, the strategic plan that you set out for. And to try and start again, what I said before, trying to work and show why, you know, what we're doing, why it's connected, how it's connected, um, to the vision you guys have. So we're moving forward with that, um. We started getting legislative briefs and updates from MMA, as they're starting to go into sessions, um. I don't know if most of you, one, only one's gone out so far, I did need to copy your packet. I don't know if you guys get the emails or the hard copies. I think there's a mix of both. From what I saw on the, the, uh, the sheet we have for dues. Some sort of quite a bit already slated in the first one, um, just as, they're just titles right now for the most part. They're still working on language for some of them. Um, I shared at the last meeting some of the ones that have been shared with us that might be somewhat relevant.
The homestead exemption is twenty-five thousand, I thought it was forty.
Yeah.
If you signed up for it, you must have, I agree with.
Yeah. Yeah, they've increased it the last few years. It was fifteen for a while and then they made it go to twenty, and we're, and we're gonna reimburse a certain percentage back.
So seventy percent.
And so, yeah, now they're twenty-five thousand dollars off of your assess- assessment, you know, for home state exemption, so. Um, if you, yeah, if you were already in it, you automatically get that increase. Uh, the, the tip agreement, I've been continuing to look into that, um, and so a couple takeaway that I've gotten so far. Um, is the use of modifying it, and so needing, I reached out to Amy to try and set a meeting and need to get in touch with the Fox Island Wind Board member, um, or chair and, and talk with them as well. Um, and then as far as the, the funds that we have, the revenues that we keep, the ten percent. Um, the money's there in reserve, um, to be used in the project area to find, in the district, that's defined in the agreement. And there's also the ability to use, use those funds that we have to support the district. I think, you know, projects that support the district are a decent two, and one of my thoughts was to try and utilize that money, or some of it anyways. To make the improvements at the thoroughfare boat launch, um, knowing that a lot of the equipment comes in there by barge. Um, and that's a, a reserve amount of money that we have that we could presumably do that work on, um.
What are the chances of they agree? Do you want to kind of change it then?
Uh, we'll, we'll see. So, I mean, it's, it's supposed to be a community project, so I mean, hopefully in that vein, that that, there'd be something that, acknowledging that. You know, the tax rate increases or hasn't changed, if there's increases in tax rate, it just means there's more on the revenue side, and if they set out with a certain amount to be needed for the project, community project, that perhaps, you know, we could just look at that and see. So hopefully there's some room to at least look at it that way, and maybe it moves, maybe it doesn't, but. Working towards it. Um. Just to give you an idea of some of the things that we had coming up, we did have, there was a road type cleanup, not say we, but the land trust organized a road type cleanup yesterday. Uh, North Haven's reached out to their park department, I guess going through some, some changes, um, and it reached out to Mark and, you know, I're gonna just talk with them to. You know, other ways that, you know, whether it's just information or training or whatever that, you know, we can just talk about partnering. We did. Try to create something back and forth for training for EMS and fire and trying to get some mutual aid type things set up and put in place, um, last year, so. It'd be good to continue to talk with them and see what might be possible. Commissioners, as Pam mentioned, wastewater, um, commissioners are meeting next Tuesday.
I could have to ask darling to put that in the wind, do you know that she did?
Um, she wasn't in today, um, so I don't know, I didn't, Dawn, I mean, to make sure that it was.
Too late?
Yes, I believe so. Um, we can make sure it's, you know, post it online if we want to sort of, you know, put it on our Facebook page to let folks know.
Yeah, both water and wastewater, please.
Um. Emergency operations team, so we continue to meet, um, weekly on that, or for the most part, weekly, uh, with a few exceptions. Um, big emphasis now is on vaccines and, you know, advocating and making sure they're available. Uh, that folks don't have to go to the mainland for them, so we're, we're doing between all parties involved and, um, finally even elder care services. Um, also involved in helping advocate for, for, uh, folks on the island, so. Working towards making sure that, you know, we're up there with anyone else in the state saying, you know, we're here, we can do it, um, as they come available.
Well, did you hear? No, probably not. I was just on the news before I came over that they had some spoiled, a lot of people got. Um, well, they were not kept at the freezing, cold enough.
Yeah. Yeah, they, um, Dr. Shaw's update today, he, he acknowledged and, and talked about that. And so, I mean, I think the big thing is just so much that's out of our hands. We don't have any direct control of the distribution, the manufacturing and all of that, but we are, many, many folks. Entities involved in this are advocating to try and make sure it's available.
So these people that got them. Whatever, well, how they described it, they'll have to be re-vaccinated, correct?
Um, well, they shouldn't be getting the booster.
I can clarify that if you'd like.
Yes.
So no one received the vaccine of the four thousand doses.
I can't, hey.
Sorry, no one received the vaccine of the distribution that had been, um. Can't remember the terminology that's used, but, but the, they are not held at the proper temperature, so they were, um, not. Um, put into people's arms. There's, there is an investigation that happens at, from the level of operation warp speed to indicate. Um, whether those vaccines are still viable and also to determine what went wrong and where and why, so. Um, it, it seemed, what I, what I heard from Shaw, this CDC briefing today was that those, um, vaccines have been redistributed, not those. Four thousand doses, but four thousand additional doses have been redistributed, so folks who were supposed to get those, uh, today and tomorrow. Um, will be getting new doses, so no one got the, no one was given those. Right, no one actually received them. Yeah, they just showed up at the, uh, just at the hospitals, but no one, no one actually got those vaccines.
Okay, I misunderstood the news report. Thank you.
Um, just a quick, I don't have it on, on this page here, but just, I did give you a memo, just kind of updating with the other capital projects, stood and talked about a couple of them already. Um, if you hadn't seen or heard, um, you know, work has started on two of the three, the bridge, Grand Place Bridge, um, in the salt shed. Um, the garage, as you mentioned, will start next week. Um, so just gave you a couple photos and updates there. On each of those, um, the timelines for, for the bridge, there's been a lot of folks asked about the bridge, the material started showing up, so they are building the temporary, starting to build out the temporary road now. Um, you know, it's designed to be a temporary road, um, so it's designed, being designed to handle. Any other vehicles that are gonna be expected to go back and forth at any time, fire, fuel, fouls, all those things, um, so they are working to make that happen. And, and their loose plan is to have. I think the majority, I think the majority of the in-water work or that temporary road and, and the culvert, you know, the bridge replacement has to be done, I think, by the end of April. Um, or get an extension from, from the permitting agency, um, and, and substantial completion needs to be done by June, but, you know. All, all were completed by the end of June, so they are estimated getting done before that, but weather dependent, I mean, they did kind of build in. You know, some of that. I think one of the big ones they were concerned about with the temperatures needed for pavement to finish off, what sections are gonna be dug up, um, so we did push it there, so.
That's not like a DV permit or anything, is it? Because it's not in the water.
For the pavement?
Right.
No.
Yeah, I mean, they can. Stretch that part of it, as long as they have everything else built that's in the water.
Right. Yeah, it's like a temporary road, it's gotta get out before, you know, long, or get an extension on that. Yeah, other than that, there's a lot, lot going on there, but moving along.
Good.
Great. Fantastic. You've been talking about these projects for a long, long time.
Yeah, yes.
We're pushing forward and actually, you know.
So between those three that are getting done, the additional paving that needs to happen, continue to happen on other roads, the transfer station retaining wall. You know, the downtown, I mean, there's no shortage of things that still need to happen, sidewalks.
Right.
Um, you know, so it's, um, moving forward, in there as we can.
What's the three project?
The what one?
He said three projects.
Well, I kind of have a salt shed as a separate one for the garage, yeah.
Okay.
The two buildings.
All right.
Cool.
I tend to want them in as one.
Yeah.
Yeah, I guess so.
Okay, reporter members.
I just know that, um, we've talked about the, uh, Meadow. And Culver, we've been talking about that for a while, and, um, Del Webster called me, and he's concerned about it also and. Encouraged us to follow through and try to get that taken care of.
Is it definitely outside of the parameters of one we can start working on now, Andy?
Um, I.
One in one.
Wouldn't, yeah, I mean, there was a, I think a fifteen-year period, I believe, looking back at it, trying to look back on it now, but, um, you know, I don't have any sort of definitive. Good legal interpretation right now to give you. I know it's generally on the agenda to try and to deal with, and I just haven't been able to.
What kind of permits are we gonna need to?
Exactly, I don't know.
And it's what, you know, what's the state's responsibility going to be, given it's their road?
Their road and they screwed it up. In the beginning.
Just a silly project.
Their fence marks were on.
I mean, there's, there's two issues there, right? There's the, the, the section of state data that's underwater a lot, and then the other issue being the, the culvert.
Right.
Our separate, separate things.
Oh, I mean, well, we have a cheap solution for the culvert problem. That's, that's an easy, that's an easy fence. You know?
But I, I do, I think we should look into that ASAP, find out what we can do.
Especially with the town garage. Yeah, I mean, that floods all the time now.
Yeah.
Especially now that we're gonna have a garage there, you know? Things we dealt with. Let's do it yesterday.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, the good news is if it's flooded, they could turn left and go the other way.
Yeah.
Yes, we'll, um, continue to.
And, and be on that. It's a major thoroughfare.
Yeah, there's no, it's on, it's totally unacceptable.
Okay, anything else under reporter members?
So the ferry boat's coming back pretty soon.
That's the plan.
It's almost end of January.
Uh, well, don't worry, I, I. Uh, well, don't worry, I, I've already got the good word that we'll have a pack for brief period of time before it goes in for its whole inspection. That about spends more time out of the water than.
I know, so how long is the hollow inspection, that shouldn't take more than a couple of days for that?
It shouldn't, as long as there aren't other, we don't worry, they'll find something wrong with them.
So it'll be gone by then, or in a few months. Did, would you, uh, I mean, you sent me that thing, but how can the ferry workers not be on top COVID vaccine priority? I mean, you sent me that list, and it seems like they could fall in to the essential workers, they could fall into the EMS, I mean, we need to push that they are in this, I mean, they don't have to take it, I always say, unless the state's making them, but I think that they should be offered them, you know, now.
Yeah.
I don't see how they can't be considered an EMS thing, because if there's a emergency out here in the middle of the night, they run the ferry, so they in, I mean, I just, I just think that that should be something that we push Mark Higgins to make sure that, I mean, I, I don't see what other people should be, they're already short-staffed as it is, as he keeps telling us. So they should be pushing for this, so that's.
We're pretty much guaranteed anything we suggest will be the opposite.
Well, I mean, that seems, that seems like, that seems like something, Janet Mills got her vaccine, because she's, um, crucial to the ongoing of the state of Maine, I mean, that's, the ferry boats are crucial to the well-being of the island, so, I mean, it should be the same.
I think it just shows that they don't really want people living out here, you're out, so.
This is for distinction, this isn't the ferry service's policy, right, this is the state of Maine direction, I'm not saying it's not worth it, so we're basically talking about advocating on their behalf.
Right.
To the state, above, you know, the CDC and the governor.
But maybe, I mean, maybe Mark knows that they're coming up next week or something, but, I mean, we should be advocating that they are in the first category of people, because they are as important a people to the island and valley even as, as we get, so, I just think that we should talk to Mark or talk to someone, I mean.
I agree with you.
There isn't, there isn't, uh, if there's no ferry and there's a, the E M T needs to go someplace, then they're S O L.
I mean, last I knew, I mean, I think, in our case, I think drivers have had the ability to get access, but I know generally drivers of EMS services and other services elsewhere weren't in the one A category, they were gonna fall into like a one B category, and they ride in the same ambulance, this is one of the things that, um, Representative McDonald was trying to advocate for, for, for other services, saying, well, they're in the same ambulance on the same call.
That doesn't make sense.
Uh, so even, even within that, I mean, there's still some, it's, again, they're trying to allocate a, a limited supply to the, the, the most needed at the time, and eventually over time, anyone that wants it will get access to one, it's just a matter of when, how long, and.
So I want to advocate towards twenty, twenty-five doses for the people that work on the ferry boats, I, I, I'm not advocating, I mean, the people in the terminals are important, but they're not as important as the people in the Coast Guard licenses.
Yeah, they can be replaced in the.
Well, I mean, I, I don't, I don't wanna sound like they're not important, but we need the people that the Coast Guard mandate. The captains, the engineers, the A V's, to get vaccinated ASAP, I mean, and if they don't want to, I mean, I don't know the state policy, but, I mean, they should just be offered them.
As Phil had, uh, Phil had, uh, some comments, Phil, you're muted, though.
There we go. Um, a couple of things, I, I spoke to Kevin more about the Marine Railway next to the town parking lot, and he's, so that you can all read what its mission is. And, and we'll put it on the next agenda, and if, if we think, or some of you think that its mission ought to be something different, we can talk about that, if it feels that it don't have any purpose any longer at all, we can talk about that.
Yeah, that sounds great.
Okay.
Okay, anything else? I'm a wejar, seconded by Pam Alley, all those in favor? I have to give Pam one.